You all ready? Okay. Okay. Welcome, everybody. Good evening. My name is Cameron Burks. I'm the mayor for this year. And we just met in closed session. We have no reportable action from that closed session. We are, well, ---- council, and this is his first official meeting. So congratulations and welcome. Okay. Well, we have a special guest tonight that's going to lead the Pledge of Allegiance for us. Edith Ehrich is here, first grader from Burton Valley Elementary School, along with her dad and mom and sister, and new family to Lafayette. And I got a chance to meet them at one of the coffees a few weeks ago. So, Edith, thank you very much for being here tonight. You can go ahead when you're ready. Everybody can please stand.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Edith. Great job. Okay, we'll move along to item number six, which is public comment. So if anybody has a comment to make on an item not on the agenda tonight, please fill out a speaker slip. And you'll have three minutes. And please state your name and your address when you come to the podium. Before we get started, I do want to let everybody know that we are testing the video recording of the session tonight for our YouTube channel. So if it does work, then we're live. If it doesn't, we'll work the bugs out and we'll make sure we're on track next time. So, okay, first, we've got, let's see, Elliot Hudson, please.
What this council has done to fill the vacancy of the March of Mark Mitchell's seat is a disgrace. Mark Mitchell would have honored the election, but you showed utter disdain for that vote. The process is over, but the outrage and bitterness you have created are deep. When someone betrays democracy and integrity in lies and cheats that is never, ever forgotten, you pretend you want the community to trust you and heal division. Given what you did, those are empty words. One of Lafayette's good residents left the room on Thursday night in tears of outrage. Another has written, "I was shaking after hearing the orchestrated political plan play out. It was disgusting, a disgrace, and a slap in the face to democracy. I've not been this angry in a long time." There was a long list of similar reactions. Your lack of integrity, disingenuous, and deceit were appalling. This is and will remain an illegitimately constituted council. Mr. Anderson, you publicly savaged Mr. Sampson for his statement two years ago that he would not run, but then you admitted that when he asked you about running before he did so, in fact, you never objected. All you said was, "It's up to you." On December 10, when you admitted that history, you changed your story to say it wasn't the reason you objected to him. How dare you? On November 26, you publicly stated that many people felt that the election should be honored and that doing so made a lot of sense. You never meant it. You spent every minute afterwards ignoring that statement and disavowing any pretense of honoring democracy. Your contention that you chose Mr. Bliss because he's needed to go to Sac -- Ms. Geringer, you said you wanted a clean slate, but the only people for whom you wanted it are your supporters. What this council needed to know. You falsely justified rejecting Ivor Sampson by saying that doing so ---- represent the continuity of autocracy and cronyism in Lafayette. -- oppose him. Your ---- personal beliefs for 4,641 voters was unprincipled and vile. The --
Any questions for the speaker? Okay. Thank you very much. We -- Okay. Mary Ann Hoysington? Hi.
No idea that I was going to speak tonight. I just wanted to come to see you in action and to support you. I'm very, very sorry that somebody in our community has attacked you like that. And there are --
I do have speaker slips here from the Dawson --
I have a motion to move items eight, eight.
I'm going to keep this brief and basically just take questions, but ---- is going to make it a little easier for council members to use the city emails rather than ---- we can make sure that all the packets are, in fact, the same.
Okay. Okay. Any public comment? Thank you very much. Okay. We'll move on then to item --
-- starting with that fiscal year, we changed things and gave the contract to ---- which they have now. Twelve, which they have now. And also, the cost of the contract has increased a lot. Another --
So I've given you a table here.
So, is it clear now that the school district --
So that's something we would look at, I think, because they're health and safety related. I have a -- I mean, you've seen the proposal that staff has put to us.
Yep.
If that's going to be a good way to --
I know our budget has been the subject of some discussion at a couple of ---- local control funding formula. This has been further exacerbated by rising costs. -- bill from the state in every fiscal year. And so our board has -- have a school board ---- for any available dollars we can find, either through budget reductions or new revenue. -- from inflation. We did go to eight, from eight to 12 guards in a one-year ---- First Street and School Street, First Street and Monroe, and Spring Hill at Relise -- reasons a crossing guard was going to need to help students onto that sidewalk. -- adding crossing guards. Part of this is just inflationary pressures. We do get to know our ---- of our school community. So with that all said, happy to answer any questions. -- you don't feel comfortable tying yourself into a long-term relationship. We're open to a one-year agreement. -- all in the scope of the dollars of this contract, but it's better than nothing. But if you have --
-- answers your question.
Yeah, I'm sorry I asked it now.
I'll go sit down.
-- was per crossing guard. I'm doing some calculations.
I --
And I guess --
I ran that number, and I --
And if we came up with a number and then just capped it over a period of time, that would be acceptable, too.
Question for the superintendent. I think you've covered a little bit of this already, but seems like there's a couple options that we could look at. One would be the recommendation from staff, of course, which is, I think, very well reasoned. The other, probably, if we think about sort of the other end of the spectrum, so to speak, would be, I'm not sure I'd be inclined to go this route, but in theory, we could just do like a straight, commit to like a straight 50% cost sharing going forward. And then sort of in between, just thinking out loud here, would be something that would be bumping us up to the 50% share currently, right? So basically doing 50-50 for the coming year, but then do the 2% inflator on top of that. So in other words, we're not quite locked into 50-50 going forward indefinitely, but we're also going a little bit, or actually substantially further than the recommendation currently. Would that, would the going to 50-50, I know it's hard to project, would go into the straight cost split currently and then having the inflator on top of that? In other words, going to 50-50 right now and then having the 2% annual adjustment to adjust for cost of living, is that the type of thing that, in terms of how you all think of the cost of the program going forward, do you foresee that that could potentially land somebody from the district back here in a few years, having to cover some additional cost growth? In other words, is there a risk that there could be a gap between 50% today plus the adjustment and then actually what would be necessary to cover half of it three, four years from now?
So from a present value basis, I like your suggestion better than Tracy's. But I think the only risk that I would point out in that, and the only thing that I think would bring us back for sure, is if traffic developed and safety around our schools developed in a way that we felt we needed to add significantly to the workforce that was out protecting the kids at those times of transit. So if we had to go from 12 to 15 because of other things that were happening in the city, then I would, without hesitation, come back and ask you for more money. But I think that if we're at a status quo, more or less, with traffic and safety around our schools, then I think we would gratefully accept something like that.
Okay. And my other question is for staff. If I can ask that.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. And just, if this was in the staff report and I missed it, I apologize, but in terms of where this would actually come from in the budget, is this basically just out of general fund?
So be out of general fund money, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
And then, okay, any other questions? Teresa? Councilmember Geringer?
Is it not, did I not? So I do like that thinking. To be helpful in public safety and in us ---- measures around, or did this come because it was something that the city's already -- long ago, and we've had them over the last several years. I don't remember exactly how many. During each of those times, we've identified certain projects that could be done, and we did them. Primarily, we started with the safe routes to school at, I'm forgetting who I was talking to, at Lafayette. And some things were done, and the city partnered on it, and they, some came at different costs. Some things were put off because the costs were too high and there weren't funds, grants at that time to help address them. The crossing guards, my understanding, have never been part of that discussion. These were, or I don't think they were during, I think they were, the increase in the number of guards was due to incidents and accidents. So I guess part of my question is, making a decision tonight about supporting the crossing guards, short of having it be part of a look at signal lights at the cross pathway on the trail, looking at things in isolation rather than looking at how do we work together to make sure we're using the resources to address the needs. So we've ---- with the city and the school district to address safety around our schools. And I got ---- addressing this in isolation and look at that bigger picture and timeline. Luckily, he's used to the kind of nonlinear getting there.
Okay. If that was for me, I hear -- I think at least a couple of you know that we do have some safe routes to school analysis done at two of our five schools. It would be great to build that out and have more explicit recommendations for each of the schools. And at our last joint committee meeting, my first joint committee meeting, we did commit to trying to find some low-hanging fruit on those safe routes analysis. That all said, I think nothing replaces the immediate need of getting our kids into their classrooms in the morning from wherever they're dropped off or their doorstep at home, if that's where they leave from, and then back into the car or to their doorstep at the end of the day. So I think those crossing guards are really on the front line of safety for our children. And I think that the increase in numbers because of these specific incidents kind of highlights how important they are in that. And the thing we want to protect more than anything is health and safety of each individual child as they travel to and from our schools. So I really would highlight this as a priority, even without kind of a lot of elbow grease and further analysis. And I think, you know, I feel fairly certain that that joint committee would come to the same conclusion if we put this question in front of them.
Vice Mayor.
Well, so is it fair to say that regardless of the safe route to school projects that may come, we're still going to need these crossing guards?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. Any additional questions for the superintendent or staff?
So one other piece, so how did you, so the one year, and if this was in here, I apologize. I know I looked at the packet and then tried to look at. So one of the staff recommendations or concerns was that the city, since the city got out of that contract, the city doesn't have control over costs going forward. And so I was wondering about something like we enter into an MOU. I love the, you know, the, the idea that, you know, you go 50/50 and then you look at what a escalator could be on a cola. Or is there a way that there's, I don't know if this addresses the staff concern about an MOU that basically any cost increases or contract changes would come back to the city? Or the city's just flat at the 50/50 as we are now at these costs with some agreed escalator? I don't know if there's an MOU that helps us to have more comfort in the potential control that we don't, loss of control over the contract. Does that make sense? And then I'll come back to the one year.
Ms. Robinson.
Well, just if I'm going to speak historically, one of the reasons that we turned it over to the school district to begin with was so that we wouldn't get into the whole, they want some and then we have to come back and say yes or no because frankly, you're not probably going to say no. But so that, I think that actually adds a layer of complication to it. Rather than just having one or the other entity really be in control of what they need. And we felt that that was absolutely in the school district's hands. Okay.
Okay, there's a couple of questions that I have. First of all, I did have a chance to speak with your board president, Suzy Pack. I know she has voiced her, voiced her advocacy around this request. But does the school board in majority agree with this request?
Ms. Pack is in the back of the room. If you want to make eye contact directly.
Just want to make sure that the board is, is in favor of, of this and it looks like, okay, all right, thanks. And then the second question for staff really is the way the recommendation is written, it ends with, you know, going forward. So what, what the recommendation is, is a non-binding, you know, decision on our part, both policy and from a financial standpoint, that we are not, you know, we can, we can change at any time. Is that what you are recommending?
Yeah, as again, I'm using the model that we use for the library. So there's not necessarily, I don't believe there's a contract, but there's an implied promise.
Okay, do we have any public comment? Thank you Superintendent Whitmore, thank you very much. Okay, Stella Witherspoon, please.
Hi. Hi, well, welcome to new council members and to Mayor Burks on your new role. I'm a Spring Hill Elementary student parent and a member of the city transportation and circulation commission. And I thank the city for its ongoing contribution to Lafayette School District Crossing Guard Program. And I request that you increase the city's level of support. Crossing Guards play an important role in keeping the city's youngest citizens safe. Studies have shown that school-aged children, pedestrians are the group at greatest risk of being involved in an automobile collision. They're short, they are not able to accurately assess when to cross the street safely, and they can make sudden unpredictable movements when entering streets. Many of the district's guards are positioned at multi-lane arterials and high traffic volumes are present when the children arrive at school during the morning peak commute. The city also benefits from the presence of crossing guards. Active modes of transport such as walking and biking reduce the number of cars on the road and mitigate congestion. Data from the federal national household travel survey indicates that during the morning commute, driving to school represents an average of 10 to 14% of traffic on the road. Elementary students have, elementary school students have a greater willingness to walk and bike and should be accorded safe coverage increased in 2015 in response to unfortunate student collisions as Superintendent Whitmore to school and were transported to the hospital. The staff report notes that in 2015, the annual cost of the program was $103,000 and present is $179,000 with the city contributing $50,000. And while the expanded coverage counts for part of this cost increase, the expanded mandated California minimum wage increase is significant, is a very significant unavoidable factor. For example, in the period from 2015 to present, the wage has gone up by 33%. And from now through 2023, the annual increase will be between seven and eight percent. And in 2024, there'll be a cap of 3.5%. While this outcome is not stated in Superintendent Whitmore's letter to council or in his comments, I worry as a parent that without an increased as the city's traffic circulation and safety of its youngest students and citizens benefits from this program, I believe there's a strong case for increasing the city cost share to an amount greater than the recommended yearly 2% increase over the current $50,000 contribution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker?
No.
Thank you very much. Okay, next speaker is Grace Dixon.
Thank you, welcome Grace Dixon, 3460 Monroe Avenue. Welcome, Mr. Bliss. I'd just like to reiterate, reiterate what Stella Witherspoon and Mr. Whitmore has stated. I live on Monroe, so I'm sandwiched in between two of the most popular, or what should I say, infamous collision sites. And my children and the children that I care for have been benefited from this program, I would say four times a day for their entire lives and I'm so thankful for it. And I cannot think of something that I could be prouder of as a city of Lafayette than to keep our kids safe as they go to school. And so anything that you could do, I'm completely supportive of. And I'm, like I said, I'm just so proud of the program that the city helps support. Thank you.
Any questions for the speaker? No, okay, thank you. Do we have any more public comment? Okay, great, we'll bring it back to the council and I'll open it up for discussion. Who would like to begin? Vice Mayor Anderson.
Well, I think it would be good for us to get back to the 50% participation and then cap our participation or bring it back for review if it hits a certain number. And that gives the, the school district some room to maneuver a little bit. But if we have a cap or a renegotiation number of let's say $100,000, when it hits that point, then it comes back to us for us to have further consideration of our participation rate and whether that's something we want to continue to do or if there's something else we want to feel better about the money being spent. I think it's, as Ms. Dixon said, Ms. Witherspoon, it's a very important and a good thing that we should help with. So there's no doubt that it's something we should be a part of. It's just a matter of having some control over how much it's going to be on an ongoing basis. So I would say 50% to start, come up with a cap and let it proceed until it hits that cap. Then we come back and talk about it again.
Okay, thanks. Can I just pause here? What is, because I'm not doing the numbers in my head. What does that number represent from Vice Mayor Anderson's suggestion?
So 50%, if we're talking about this year, would be, well, it's just for round numbers, $90,000. So that would be an additional $40,000 this year. And that would be, you know, going forward, it would be, you know, 40,000, it'd be 90,000.
Be 90,000.
Or whatever, you know.
If things inflate, we would go along with 50%, but we hit 100,000, then it comes back and we take a look at it again and decide whether we want to go further at 50% or do we need to start pulling back? It's our question.
And would you, on the, on the inflator, would you go to 100,000?
No.
Would you go with, I'm sorry.
I wouldn't have a set inflator. I would simply say we'll match 50% of the cost.
Until 100,000?
Until we hit 100,000. At that point, we come back and re, rediscuss
Got it.
where we are. And then we can proceed again either with an inflator or another, a new cap or whatever we want to do. But we have some containment, some ceiling on our participation before we go back.
Other thoughts? Councilmember Geringer?
I'm very supportive of that and with the cap. And I agree with not putting in the additional inflator because costs will change relative to the district as we've heard on inflation and minimum wage and all of those things. But I would like to see us go to the 50% and I like Vice Mayor Anderson's proposal.
Okay, Councilmember Bliss.
Yeah, I'd be supportive of the 50% and then setting a cap to revisit our share at some future date as, as we hit that cap.
Okay, I agree. I agree with Vice Mayor Anderson's idea and my colleagues up here. I just a few comments on my part. I do thank the staff for their approach on this. We had, we do have a number of programs that we review every year and some are identified in the, in the staff report. And we've talked about some that are, are unfunded moving forward. And we're going to have to pull from our, our general fund and our reserves to fund those, those programs. So I also, you know, appreciate the approach similar to what we do with, with the library. I think, I think the methodology behind that, the reason behind that was, was very, very sound. I do however, think that this is an opportunity for us to signal, you know, right away that, you know, very, very quickly with the new school board, that we do, based on the letter, we do identify, I think what Vice Mayor Anderson said, you know, we've, this has kind of fallen off the radar for a few years in terms of our unofficial commitment to go, to go halfway. So I do think it's appropriate that we come to the table and make this commitment. There is a clear nexus to public safety and to the benefit to our community. So I do not see this in any way as a form of subsidizing our public education system. This is, this involves making sure our streets are safe, our kids are safe, and making sure that the integrity of our, our school system, which is very, very much linked to our community here, is even stronger. So I'm all for the, the motion. If you'd like to go ahead, Vice Mayor, make the motion.
Okay, well, I would move that we participate in the cost of the school district's crossing guard program at a rate of 50% starting with this year's contribution of $90,000. And then if and when the actual contribution rate exceeds $100,000, that we will have it come back for review and reassessment at that point.
Second?
Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Superintendent Whitmore, thank you. And to the members of school board, thank you for being here. Okay, we're going to go on to item 11A, public hearings. And we have a presentation from staff and we'll turn it over to Pyle. Great.
Good evening, Mayor Burks and members of the council, members of the public. You looked at this ordinance that we're adopting by reference for the animal control code, which is a Ponte Acosta County's ordinance, the first time at December 10th. We would, because this is a county ordinance that we're adopting via reference, we request that the council reintroduce the item and conduct a public hearing as a matter of just legislative process. But the council didn't have any comments when this ordinance was first introduced. I'm just really here to answer any questions that you might have and we request that you adopt this tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council? Yes, Vice Mayor Anderson.
I guess I may not understand this, but this is the part that's 416-12.436, prohibited dog ownership for convicted felons. So I guess I understand the intent is that we don't want people who have been convicted of a felony owning certain types of dogs. Is that the issue? It's not clear to me. Is it a dog that is a danger to public health? And I don't quite see where that's actually clarified. Go ahead.
Yeah, if I, do you have an answer? Because I looked it up last night.
Oh, you did?
I did.
Oh, okay.
But I will, I will refer to staff because my memory is still hazy. If you'd like to jump on that one.
No, I, I would have to research and get back to you. So if you have done the research.
Yeah, I, what I was looking for are certain types of dogs. That's what I at first thought. But when I, when I clicked on one of the links, it looked like dogs that had been involved in incidents in the past and had been cited by the county, you know, like one, one incident or two incidents. Or an owner that was derelict in the ownership of the pet. But I couldn't, I couldn't find a list of particular species of dogs. That was my very quick research last night. So yeah, if you, if you can find anything, great. If that's okay, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just kind of didn't understand exactly what that was meant to do. I had my own idea. I was looking for a certain type of dog, a pit bull or something like that.
Right.
But I, it's not here, so I don't know what, what they're talking about.
So just based on a quick review of the ordinance, it does not look like it is tied to a particular type of animal. But again, I mean, because if you look at the ordinance itself, it talks about the nature of any complaints regarding the dog, the strength of the dog, including the jaw strength, dog's tolerance to pain, dog's tendency to refuse, to terminate an act, an attack, dog's potential, you know, to bite humans or be kind of aggressive and unpredictable behavior and the dog's bite resulting in serious injury. So it does not look like there is a particular species of dog. It just, as you mentioned, Mayor Burks, that it does, is associated with the, you know, if the dog was involved in some kind of act. But we can certainly research more and talk to the county about it and get back.
Well, I guess my, my concern is that if a felonious person has a dog and then the dog does something wrong, then is, what happens? Does that mean then that they can't have the dog anymore? The dog is taken away? Everyone's nodding their head. So the dog is taken away. Now, if the dog has a record of doing bad things, they can't even own the dog. Is that the other part that I'm understanding from the ordinance? So they need to, a person who's committed a felony needs to be aware whether any dog they own actually has had any incident or has any of these traits. It seems a little amorphous, but I guess I understand the, the concern. Because the sense that people who commit felonies may take dogs and do bad things with them. It seems a little overreaching in terms of profiling people, but you know, I'd like to know a little more about it, actually.
Okay. Any other questions, Vice Mayor?
No.
Okay, let me look down the questions.
Questions here, no.
Okay, Councilmember Geringer. Okay, do we have any, any public comment? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. And it sounds like the Vice Mayor would like a little bit more information on that particular element. And if there's others, I'm, I'm more than comfortable supporting continuing this unless we're under a deadline to adopt.
No, we're not under a deadline to adopt.
Okay.
But we want to adopt this as soon as possible because the county is already enforcing this matter, so.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'd love to have a little more clarification on exactly that situation. And maybe a representative from the county could actually come and explain it to us if, if we can't figure it out.
We can bring it back on the January 28th meeting if you want to continue to that date.
Sounds good to me.
That, that one might be fairly full. Is that right? I'm looking at the city clerk, so maybe we can.
First meeting in February?
If that's okay with Vice Mayor, maybe first meeting.
I won't be here in the first meeting of February.
We're not doing it then. How about the second meeting in February?
Second meeting sounds fine.
Is that okay with?
20, 25th, yeah.
February 25th.
February 25th, okay. So Councilmembers Geringer and Bliss.
Sounds fine, sure.
Do you have any additional questions or that you'd like to bring back on that date? Okay, so do we, we're good on direction?
We need a motion to continue the public hearing.
I would move continuance to the second meeting in February.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move to item consents, I believe. So item 12, which is items removed from the consent calendar. So I removed 8E on, and this is an update on PG and E. Let me pull this up. And so unless anybody here has any questions on the dais, I'm fine with opening it up to public comment for Mr. and Mrs. Dawson to speak, if that's acceptable. Okay.
Okay. So why don't we start with Gina Dawson? Michael Dawson. Okay. Oh, after Michael Dawson, there it is. In small print. Mr. Dawson?
Usually it's ladies first. Good evening and welcome, Councilmember Bliss and our new city council manager. I'm here to formally ask that we once and for all start the process to unwind the tree cutting agreement with PG&E. You've probably seen the headlines today that PG&E announced that they're going bankrupt. Gishy Williams stepped down on Sunday. PG&E is considering selling off their gas asset division. A judge has ordered their safety culture to be reviewed, and PG&E admitted to falsifying gas marker records over the course of many years post San Bruno. All this has led to the stock being down 80% today. So all these actions can be attributed to one factor and one factor only, and that is PG&E's willful neglect and inability to safely operate their gas and electrical business. This is in essence why Gina and I and hundreds of other residents have been working nearly two years now to stop the unnecessary destructive and distracting tree cutting agreement from 2017. So my question to the city council is, why is the city still defending the tree cutting agreement that has nothing to do with safety? It's clear PG&E knowingly misled the city on the reasons why to cut down the trees, and that should be reason enough. I can also think of dozens of other reasons why we should stop the agreement, and many of those excuses we've given over before. But two that I want to highlight is that, one, it would be an unfortunate precedent to set land use for discretionary program on their easements. Also, I think it's going to expose citizens to litigation by PG&E if they refuse to have trees cut down on their land. We've seen that over the course of months with PG&E and other communities, and that's a real risk here in Lafayette as well. We are continuing our talks with PG&E and the CPUC as part of the Safety Alliance, and I'm proud of the work that we're doing right now to get PG&E to do safety programs like burying the exposed pipeline on Beechwood Drive. That project's now completed. But it's very odd that the city's not fully on our side on this issue. We still have this agreement that's stopping us from doing all the safety work that we want to do with PG&E. So I'm asking tonight that we start the process to talk about this. How can the residents stand together with the city council? We've always said we've been on your side. Let's start the work together and unwind this agreement. We did start this conversation briefly in September 10th, but then it kind of went away and we had our discussions with PG&E in these alliance meetings. But let's talk about the agreement. It really is hindering our work. So, thank you.
Any questions for the speaker? Okay, thank you. Gina Dawson?
Hello, Council Gina Dawson, 711 Lafayette. Welcome, Councilmember Bliss. I want to just reiterate Michael's comments and basically say that it's definitely within the city's power, and we contend your responsibility to actually end the tree agreement because now more than ever we face uncertainty with PG&E as far as how the utility will be managed, let alone the gas division, and how community concerns will be addressed. They're definitely going to be very low on the totem pole until a lot of this is resolved. And since the agreement has been in place, we've questioned much of the knowledge that PG&E did bring to us about our safety risk to the city. And after a year and a half of asking these questions and we got the answers, I think, Councilmember Anderson, you're aware too, there was a lot of inconsistencies even between the answers they gave us at one point compared to earlier points and even between answers they gave to the PUC. Based on that, we did ask the PUC for an audit, and that audit did have findings where PG&E mislabeled equipment. They didn't mark the transmission pipeline. These are federal regulatory items that have been for many, many years, decades, not in compliance. So we'd like to make sure that the right things are being taken care of and this tree priority is the wrong priority. We are glad the pipeline has been, the exposed pipeline was addressed, but we actually know that PG&E also identified vintage pipeline, much older than that segment, for replacement, and we don't know. When are they going to address it? Will they address it? What was the issue with that pipeline? Furthermore, it does seem wrong for the city to use resources for this lawsuit because if you looked at the documentation, there is no CEQA compliance, and even PG&E asked if this is a discretionary agreement, it's the city's responsibility to either do environmental review or a negative declaration, and that has not been done. So PG&E recognizes that. Moreover, under the circumstances with PG&E's pending bankruptcy, this agreement might not be enforceable. So we ask you to please take a look at this, see if we can rewind it. If it's truly about safety, we should start from scratch. Ask PG&E to, as we have been doing, to identify what the risks are, prioritize them, and work down that line. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Okay. I just will have one comment. Would like to thank both speakers for their continued engagement on the alliance that Mr. Dawson had referenced, where the PUC, PG&E, and the community, a lot of the community represented by the Dawsons are engaged in discussions. And I believe there is, according to the staff report, a plan to have the next meeting in January. So thank you for your involvement in that. Vice Mayor Anderson?
I wanted to ask the city attorney some questions about what was stated. First of all, I believe that the agreement that we have for the tree removal is the only thing that's really been holding PG&E from actually taking the trees out. Can you confirm that?
Sure. A little background about the tree agreement. At the time, PG&E did not believe it needed to comply with our tree ordinance. They felt they were preempted from having to comply with our tree ordinance. We disagreed, so we entered into an agreement where they agreed to comply with our tree ordinance. So if we unwound the agreement, I presume they would continue to take the position that they don't need to comply with our tree ordinance, and in fact, if they didn't want to remove trees, would proceed to do so without coming to the city and seeking the permits.
And I guess the other question comes back to the current state of PG&E in terms of the bankruptcy. What exactly does that mean in terms of our agreement and our standing with PG&E? Does anything change? Is that something we should assess and then come back with maybe a new idea about how we want to interact with this entity? What's your feeling?
I am checking currently with our bankruptcy counsel and our firm to be able to provide you with an opinion on that.
Okay.
So I will follow up with you once I get more information.
So we'll have something that comes back in a public setting? Do you have a sense of when that's going to be?
I'm happy to try to put it on the next meeting. I know the next meeting's a little busy, so I don't know what your preference is.
Well, if there's time, I think, I was going to ask for this to be agendized, actually, in the next, while we're on the topic. I think it's relevant and important and time sensitive, so I think it would be good to have at the next meeting, and we'll just make it work. I'm sorry. If that's works, we'll fit it in there, Vice Mayor Anderson, if that's okay, because you'll be gone the next following meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, if that's possible, it would be helpful. I mean, the Dawsons have done a great job of identifying a lot of issues with PG&E. I have no doubt on that, and I appreciate all their work. They know that. But the bankruptcy statement they're making, what that really means in terms of this particular agreement, I think someone needs to take a look at that and see if there's something that happens or doesn't happen. And then we need to just confirm that right now, there's no tree cutting that's happening because there's a process in place that they have to conform with before they're allowed to do that, and part of it is coming back to us with specific descriptions of what in fact they are going to do, which trees, where.
Any comments, Councilmember Bliss, Councilmember Garringer?
I just had a quick question. Again, as said, thank you for the... ...city attorney. The grounds on which, I understand you said that PG&E, prior to this agreement, believed that they were exempt from our tree protection ordinance. On what grounds did they make that claim? Not to go too deep into the weeds, I'm just curious for background, what the...
They cited some cases that we didn't necessarily agree with, so it was a difference of opinion, but we felt pretty strongly that we could enforce our tree ordinance. And so the compromise for them was to enter into the agreement where they agreed to comply with our ordinance. I think they felt that they wanted to act like they were voluntarily complying so that they could still make that argument with other cities.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. You good with direction? We don't need a vote or a motion or anything, right? We do need a motion to agendize. Oh, yes.
I move continuous to this item to our next meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you to the Dawsons. We'll move along to item 13A, council commission reports. Council members report on activities, consideration of matters. Council members wish to initiate for placement on a future agenda. Does anybody have any? Okay. Yes, Councilmember Garringer?
I just wanted to follow up. I know that I had asked last time, and I know the Park Theater is having a meeting and hadn't had a meeting since, but having an update come back from staff, and I'm willing to not push it on to the next agenda, the February 11th agenda, because it's so busy unless it's already there. But I wanted to not lose sight of that. So, and then I don't know if this is too soon, but I don't know that there is a too soon, but our criteria for filling a vacancy and when there is a vacancy that occurs and because of the situation that we were in because of an unexpected, very untimely death of a council member, I do think that maybe sooner rather than later, I would like to have us bring that back on to an agenda. And then I think, I'm almost done, I don't have the really long list, but on the CASA compact and other housing, I think I have heard in our orientation that might be coming forward, but I wanted to know when we might be hearing about that.
An update on CASA is coming to you next, at your next meeting. And it's the meeting where our new assembly member will also be present. So the mayor is trying to have her stay while we talk about CASA.
Things or when the performances, but I just wanted to, when Don Tatsin isn't here, I would like us to consider continuing that. And I know you had mentioned it in one of your visits this weekend, Mayor, that someone should come and play the piano or something, and so I want to just put in a word for continuing that.
Yeah, we, as a, we are, Jeff Hammond, our communications analyst is spearheading on the staff side, and we intend to continue that wonderful tradition that former mayor started, so.
That's it.
Councilmember Bliss, anything on your end?
Okay, I've got just a few things. One, just an update on a few activities. I did have a coffee on Sunday with members of the community, which is fantastic. I just wanted to thank the community for coming out. It's an opportunity to speak candidly and frankly, and the insights and ideas that I've been hearing from folks have been outstanding, so a couple of really well-attended and positive discussions there. I also spent most of the weekend walking the downtown on Mount Diablo Boulevard. I met with about 70 or so businesses, just to introduce myself and to hand my business card out and to thank them for being local businesses here and committing our, the importance we place on our local commerce, and again, seeking their ideas and insights on how they feel things are going and ideas around how we can work with the chamber and work with property owners and so forth. So it goes to one of the goals I stated on the 10th around doing even more to liven our downtown, and it was a fantastic, fantastic weekend. A few things. One, additional meeting I attended was a joint school bus program meeting on Friday, and the board, the La Mirinda Joint School Bus Program, the board is right now considering a new contract with a provider. And I know former Mayor Tassen provided an update on this during his last meeting, but in short, the cost of the program looks fairly certain that it will go up considerably based on previous years where rates were far below market rates and rates that other communities within the Bay Area had been experiencing. Because of the housing crunch and because of the labor demand and so forth, because of the need to purchase new buses, those rates will be going up. I'll be sure to keep the council informed on what decision the board is going to make. There was a survey that went out to 1,100 families, associated with questions about ability and willingness to pay more for the service, and the overwhelming response was that the service itself was critical and that there was some appetite within those 1,100 families at community to pay more. But it will be a big, big change, and as we negotiate that contract and lock that in, I'll keep everybody updated. Okay. I think that does 13A. We have the PG&E matter agendized, which is good. So, okay, well, let's move on to item 13B, and this is on our process for hiring a search firm for the city manager recruitment. I don't know if our administrative services director has any comments to kick this off or if he'd...
I believe we have received four responses to the RFP that went out. I believe that the city clerk has those in her office right now. Beyond that, I don't really have any, I mean, I can respond to questions about, I've been involved with recruit, using recruiters and other, we used a recruiter, for example, for Parks and Rec Director, so I'm familiar with the process of looking at the RFPs. I've also been involved, for example, at MPA when they were looking for a new executive director. We also used a recruiter. So I am familiar with some of the, some of the main ones that responded.
Okay. I think, thank you very much. On November 13th, for our new council members, and I wasn't at this portion of the meeting, so Vice Mayor, please jump in if you, if I'm saying mistaken with any of this information, but it was agreed by the council at the time that the entire council would interview all four firms. And I wanted to bring it back for our new council for any discussion, and, you know, if you agree with that approach, that's fine. We can, we can get them scheduled, and I think that the quicker we get this process moving, I think the better. But I did want to bring it back for our two council members in particular and the Vice Mayor, just to have one more conversation before we proceed. So any, any comments from the Vice Mayor or Councilmembers Bliss or Garringer?
Well, I think, if I could just add to what you said, one of the clear desires was to have this new council decide what process they wanted to use, but that was kind of the starting point of the conversation. And I know that then-city manager Falk had gathered... ...in place, you can begin to work on this. So I would suggest that beyond... ...process itself, because there's some sense that it should be a public process. I don't know how you do that myself. I've never been in a situation where I've seen a city manager or a director of an agency hired in a public process, but maybe there's a way to do it and we should maybe know more about that. And if that's what we want to do, then we would probably want to make sure that the firm that we hire has either experience with that or feels comfortable with that particular direction, if that's where we're going. So I would suggest that it's not only how do we want to select, but also what are we looking for, which we need to talk about.
Any comments? Councilmember Garringer?
Sort of way to start. Definition of public process, in having interviewed search firms before, a couple of times with the school board, there are firms that have, to Vice Mayor Anderson's point, have much more open, public process system for doing that. And so I do think that's important when we're looking at the firms and interviewing the firms, and some part of that is how we structure the questions. And so one of my, I guess, process questions is, do we have a committee, ad hoc committee similar to the way that you put together, the two of you got together and put together questions for the appointment process before we go into interviewing the four firms? Or do, I mean, how do we work that part? I do think that it's important for all of us to be able to be in the process to interview the firms and to have that piece of it. I think it, and the interviews, my understanding is of the firms... I think it, and the interviews, my understanding is, of the firms are done in public. At least that's how the school board has done that in the past, or I guess I'll call it the other agency. So I guess my question is, going forward, would we form an sort of ad hoc committee to first go through those, help schedule? I don't know what the experience has been here. Well, we haven't done that in a very, very long time, so.
That's right. Councilmember Bliss?
So what you're describing, so everything that Councilmember Garringer said made sense. In terms of deciding, so it sounds like it's a given, as I understand what you just said, that, or not a given, but it's pretty much accepted that we would do the hiring of the, the interviewing or the hiring of the firm as a public process? Am I understanding that part of it correctly? And then, or is that something, I mean, I would, my inclination for both, if it's feasible, and this goes to one of the criteria for picking the firms, but my general inclination would be to make the processes open as is feasible. And I think feasible is key, but I think if there's a way to do, you know, certainly the selection of the firm, but I'd also go so far as to say some or as much of the element of, of doing the hearings on the applicants in open process, that would be my inclination. And so if making that a criteria for how we think about the firms, part of the equation, I think that would be worth doing. Yeah, I was going to ask staff about...
So I will, I will say that interviewing candidates in a public forum, you're going to lose candidates, because there are people who don't want their current job to know that they're interviewing for another job. So I think that possibly something that you could ask the firms is, you know, maybe once you've done your initial vetting and you've got maybe a couple candidates or one candidate, or there may be ways to do that, but I would definitely caution you against doing the entire process in public for that reason.
That's helpful. So we're talking about in terms of the public process, primarily just the process of picking the firm then, is what I understand. Is that correct?
We can, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
We, so we can do that. And that's what on the, on the 13th, I think, was sort of discussed. And the initial discussion was an ad hoc committee, I think Mayor Tasson and I were sort of on, to review the responses from the RFP and to, you know, work with the council on, on interview questions and to get those done fairly quickly. Because if you look, and I'm, I'm 100% for a very transparent process through and through here, when you look at having four firms come into a city council meeting in an open session and, and going through an interview and a selection process, this will certainly push our decision-making out likely several months, which is fine if we're all okay with that. So I think that's where, I agree with the Vice Mayor, we do want to step back and look at what we want in general, because that's going to inform the questions that we ask in our interviews of these forums. So one idea is to have an ad hoc committee maybe develop those questions and then bring them to the council to deliberate and agree on those questions. And then if we want to do them in the, in the public, we schedule, we schedule the firms to come and, and interview them. Or we could have an ad hoc committee develop the questions, deliberate the questions, and then the council gives the ad hoc committee the authority to go out and do the interviews. And, you know, we can narrow down to maybe our top choice and then have them come in for the council to meet. There's various ways to skin the cat here, so that's what the discussion is about. Vice Mayor Anderson?
I think that's the option. So I'd like to know, do you have any particular leaning one way or another?
My leaning would be to have an ad hoc committee develop the questions, bring them back to the council for the council to deliberate and approve, and then direct the ad hoc committee to go back, interview the four firms, and invite our top selection to come before the council to ensure everybody's comfortable with that. But I would look to staff to see if there's anything legally wrong with that or if...
No, that's legally appropriate. And you're correct, if the majority of the council wants to interview the firms, it would be required to be done in a public setting. But if you did the ad hoc committee, you could interview the four firms and then narrow it down so that the full council only sees one or potentially two firms.
Okay.
So as I understand it, then the public, or the sort of, in a, in a sort of public hearing context like this, the key pieces then would be, with what you described, would be the discussion of the questions and the criteria, and then the sort of open Q and A with the candidate, that the firm that's determined by the ad hoc committee to be the sort of leading finalist.
The one that we, the ad hoc committee would put forward after screening of all four. Yeah.
Councilmember Garringer?
So, so we did that, have done, I have experience with that as well, but, so where it is then is, when you come back with the questions and at the next meeting, we would discuss the questions and the process and what the criteria would be, sort of the charge to the ad hoc committee? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's, that's what I, yes.
And so part of that would be that in looking through, what we would be prepared to come back with would be criteria like, in looking at a firm, please look at a firm that does engage the public in a very open way in terms of determining what the criteria are that we, the community, want in a new city manager or in a city manager, so that the public has input throughout that process. It's not hung up by them having to come here for a public meeting with the city council, but there are focus groups, there are different kinds of going out to stakeholders, the chamber, the business, different constituencies, the school district. So that that firm, that's one way to put in a sort of bigger public process, is through that, the firm we select. Because to Tracy's point, there are firms that feel like that they keep it very tight, they do come in for a, you know, focus group, they may do a survey, but they want to keep everything very tight in order to not lose candidates that don't want to, you know, run the risk of having that. And so it's that balance between making sure we have that very transparent, open process, but recognizing we're still acting in a sort of personnel area. And so there are things that we want to be sensitive to. So I'm, I'm okay with not interviewing every one of the search firms. I think that at the next meeting with the questions and with how we work the criteria, we can get there.
Okay. Vice Mayor Anderson?
Well, I'm intrigued by Councilmember Garringer's concept. So maybe what we're looking for is a firm that can give us kind of a roadmap, describe to us a roadmap that gets us the kind of input and vetting that we're looking for in terms of the process itself and what we're looking for. I mean, I guess what, what I hear you saying is that the criteria gets to be created by the, by our constituents, our residents, our businesses, by interacting, this firm goes out, they have focus groups, they have discussions, and they compile basically their sense of what it is the community wants. And then based on that, they are both looking for and ready to kind of initially screen people who are interested. And then that group comes to us and then we actually interview them and make a selection. Is that...
Wait, say that again.
Well, so I guess what I'm sensing is that instead of, instead of really knowing exactly what we're looking for in a city manager, we're asking for a firm to go out and poll and assess and gather information about what people's expectations are and thoughts. And then they're going to apply that to their process of finding individuals who meet those criteria, and then those individuals will be what we bring forward in an actual interview process, and we actually talk to those people. But the firm's task is to give us a program or to describe to us their experience with that kind of vetting process, where you go out into the community and you have focus groups, you have meetings to find out what people are looking for. And then they create this, this filter that they're going to use to figure out who, who would be good possible candidates for us. Is that...
Yes.
Okay.
And that is the experience that I have had with different, different firms. And it's, that's, that, what I believe what we said, well, actually, I guess that's our thing, our discussion too. We had, the previous council had agreed that this council would decide what the process would be going forward. And I think we jumped into, we're hiring, you know, a search, we're going to go out and we're going to hire search firms because we do want it to be as open, transparent, and as broadly looking out at candidates as we can, correct? We're not looking, we are looking to look outside of, you know, the city of Lafayette and at all candidates.
Well, I think we...
Is our assumption that we've had going forward.
Yeah, I mean, my, my understanding was, we had, you know, all candidates, you know, whether they're internal right now to the city, city staff, to outside talent. We want to keep the aperture wide, so we can feel the best pool.
So with that, I do think that how we find that, how we determine which of those firms has to be through that filter of how sort of wide and transparent do we want that to be? How much of the community, how much community engagement can there be to make sure that we're creating? And it's really a, almost like a job announcement, like a job posting. You're coming down, we want people who have, you know, this experience or this criteria or, you know, whatever it is, and that's what you're getting from your search firm.
Can I ask a clarifying question? And I don't mean to sound like I'm splitting hairs, but it's something that I want to make sure I'm understanding. So there's two ways we could approach it in terms of the criteria for picking the firm, picking up on your, your thing, which I really, I really like, and I agree with the idea of the openness. One would be to say that sort of a priori, what we are looking for is the max, like, just a flat-out, as open as possible process as you can do, and we're looking for you to pitch us on your ability to basically just go completely, you know, maximal on public input, public engagement, public means. That's one way we could approach it. The other way, which is still in the same spirit of what you're describing, I was trying to understand what we're agreeing on, is to say, we believe principally in the importance of civic engagement. We're looking for you to tell us where along that spectrum, from your expertise as a firm, you recommend we land and sort of, what does that look like in practice? Those are similar in terms of spirit, but they're different directives to what we're asking the applicant firms to tell us. And I'm just, I want to get some thoughts as to how as a council we'd want to go, because they're, they're similar, but they're, some, one's a little bit more, we're looking for more like a formative response on like, from their expertise, how do, what do they think is that right balance between openness as a, obviously as a good, but also, you know, efficiency and being sensitive to time, any time desires we might have as to when the process can move forward, so.
And the confidentiality of the applicants. So I think that, yeah, I'm going to bet that every one of these firms has, has heard this sort of pressure sort of continuum that you're, that you're addressing, that you want it to be very, very open, but there are, kind of back to that, you're doing this basically personnel matters in as public a way as you can without infringing upon the candidates and hamstringing the search firm. So I think, and we're going to come back at the next meeting and really hash all this out as well, right? And you'll come back with some questions and...
Yeah, I think...
Or have we done this and we can, no?
No, I mean, I think, I think the first step, if we all agree, is appointing an ad hoc committee to develop those questions that would get to what you're suggesting be, you know, a heavy criteria for the selection. So what I would do is ask for volunteers and for the ad hoc committee, and Councilmember Garringer seems very informed on this, this topic with good ideas. I don't know if you'd like to be part of that?
Yes, I would be happy to be. I was going to say something like, I don't know, you guys kept a city manager here for almost 28 years. We did have a few superintendent changes, but I'm happy to be part of the committee.
And then, I don't know, Councilmember Bliss or Vice Mayor Anderson, would you like to, I know...
I'm happy to, to be engaged. I, I, but let me just say something, which I think might be revealing. If we go down the track of basically asking the question, which is firms, all four, all four firms, just, you give us a proposal that represents what you can do for us to create an open process, given our certain circumstance, and we'll look at those and we'll evaluate them, and based on that, we're going to decide where we want to go. And then each firm looks back at their experiences and their idea of what we might want and gives us a proposal that basically outlines how they would do that. And then we get a chance to see what they look like and decide if there's one that we like over the others, hopefully there is, and then that's the one we're most likely to engage. I'm just wondering if that's the question.
Well, yeah, that, I mean, that is a good question. We can, we can go that route and ask basically, send out another RFP is what that would...
Well, I think we've got RFQs, right?
I was going to say, have we looked?
We have quotes basically, or qualifications from four firms. So you could go to those four firms and say, all right, now we'd like to have a proposal from you, which basically outlines how you would go about giving us this type of open search and interview process. What does it look like? How would you pursue it? Have you done it before? What are your experiences with it, et cetera? And see what they come back with.
Okay. And then once they come back, the idea then is to...
Ad hoc committee takes a look.
The ad hoc committee takes a look.
Finds the one or two that look the strongest, brings those back.
To the entire council, the top one or two. Okay. Does anybody, everybody agree with that approach? Okay, then why don't Vice Mayor Anderson and Councilmember Garringer, if I could ask you as the ad hoc committee to engage the staff on exactly what we want to go back to these firms with, in terms of asking them for a proposal?
Well, if, if, if that concept floats, then I'm thinking it's just a matter of getting it written down. We work with Tracy in terms of getting it to them and written down in a cogent way that makes some sense, so we get a proposal back. In other words, we're done with the process.
We are.
If we can all agree that that's what we're going to do.
Do we all agree?
Yeah.
Councilmember Bliss, okay.
I agree with that. I had a head nodding going on.
All right, good. So I think we're, we're set there. Ms. Robinson?
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
So would you envision not interviewing them in person, just getting their written cor requests back?
No, no.
Because they would come, they, you would, they're going to come back and talk to you and basically present this to you.
Correct.
Okay, good. Because I was just saying, because part of it is the personality fit, and you would want us to do that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
So the ad hoc committee basically gets the written and may want to actually engage them to shortlist them. Then the shortlist group comes here and makes a presentation in the public setting, and then the council decides what they want to do.
Yeah. Okay. Do we need a motion to appoint the ad hoc committee or...
That would be nice, yes.
Okay. So I would, I would move that we appoint Vice Mayor Anderson and Councilmember Garringer to form the ad hoc committee responsible for engaging with staff and the recruitment firms and interviewing those firms, and then bringing back their top one or two, leave it at their discretion, for the entire council to interview and make a final selection. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We good on that for the city clerk? We're good? Okay, all right. Staff is nodding. All right, excellent. Okay, thanks very much. We're good with that. So no written communications, I believe?
I think Dennis has a...
Yes.
A burning question.
I'm Dennis Erkin.
Hi, Dennis.
You need to get to a mic if you're going to say anything.
Yeah.
Maybe it's a public comment on this item, I don't know.
Hi, I'm Dennis Erkin with the, the Chamber of Commerce and Mayor Brooks. I just want to say that, that your decision to walk up and down the street and talk to all those, those businesses was fantastic. And we've already heard from a number of them, how, just the positive nature of it. So I just wanted to make sure that, that we all heard that, that, thank you. Well done, sir.
Thank you very much. All right, thanks. And if we could ask you to fill out a speaker slip, that would be outstanding, if we could. Thank you very much. Okay, I think with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
What? Good. Eight twenty-eight?
Congratulations.
Hey, thank you. Well done. I really liked, I really appreciate the way you run these.
So when you got on the call, it was what? Because you ended at eight-thirty. So it's you, it's you that is...
Sure, sure. That was, wasn't that the staff?
Yes.
Keep them moving.
I said, I said, so it's Cam, Mike, I said, thank you to, to Mr. Bliss, because now our meeting was so short and it's him we needed.
Hey, you guys, everyone's still live until they turn off, but there you go. And it'll be up tomorrow.
So you know, it's interesting, I don't know, you probably saw it, but... Second of the retail workshops, she actually had her...